All right, we'll call this meeting to order if you would please. Through the regular meeting of the Weyburn City Council held at council chambers at 5:00 PM Monday, April 8th, 2019. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, a strategic planning priorities meeting held March 25th. Could we have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
No discussion? All in favor? Carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda?
None from administration, your worship.
Council? We're just gonna move a couple, number four past six there, just to ensure that the delegations are all here. People are all here, we're just gonna move it slightly down. So going ahead with that, all in favor? Agenda? There's no public hearings, moving the delegations down a little bit lower. We're gonna start off with the reports on the standing committees. Mr. Van Betchu, if you would please, Police Commission.
Thank you, your worship. A regular meeting of the Weyburn Police Commission was held in the Administration Boardroom 4:00 PM Tuesday, March 19th, 2019. Correspondence. Letter received from Townes Stoughton inquiring on the new policing module. Chief Pritchard will contact them to discuss. CAPG submitted a call for proposals to host the CAPG annual meeting and conference in either 2021 or 2022. The board took this as information. On reports, in the mayor's report, in February 2019 in comparison to February 2018, crimes against persons has remained the same. At four, crimes against property has decreased by 17. Total calls for service has increased by, from 368 in 2019 to 338 in 2018, and alarm calls decreased by one. The chief, in the chief's verbal report, he updated on recent activity in the police department and accounts payable where the board took this as information and approved. Bylaw enforcement, Chief Pritchard presented the February bylaw enforcement activity report for February 2019. Chief Pritchard presented the Weyburn Humane Society report for the month of February 2019. These reports were taken as information. In unfinished business, Council Richards and the chief will meet on the strategic plan and bring information back to the board. Under new business, a call for 2019 CAPG resolutions. Mayor inquired of a new testing for resiliency in regard to PTSD and inquired if a resolution should go for regarding the debriefing of officers for PTSD. The board decided not to submit this at this time. And then the board was updated on the status of current contract negotiations with the police association. The meeting was adjourned.
Thank you. Moving forward, that will be noted to be filed. Consent agenda, we have the water treatment plant report, utilities report for January, February 2019, and cash activity report for February 2019. Could I get a motion, please?
Your worship, I make a motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
And those are all available to be seen on our website. At that point, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. We now come forward to delegations and proclamations. The first one we have is the Day of Mourning proclamation on the National Day of Mourning. Every year, thousands of people gather around the world on April 28th to observe the National Day of Mourning. Wanda Bartlett is here to speak before I read the proclamation.
Good evening, everyone. We get up every day, go to work, then come home to our families and loved ones. It's a routine that is so familiar to many of us that we rarely give it a second thought. Every worker deserves to come home safe and sound, but in 2018, 48 Saskatchewan workers didn't make it home. On behalf of the Weyburn District Labor Council, I'd like to invite the community of Weyburn to join us at a ceremony of remembrance on Sunday, April 28th, 2:00 PM at the Tommy Douglas Calvary Center to recognize the victims of workplace accidents and disease. Thank you.
Whereas every year, more than 1,000 Canadian workers are killed on the job, and whereas thousands more are permanently disabled, and whereas hundreds of thousands are injured, and whereas thousands of others die from cancer, lung disease, and other ailments caused by exposure to toxic substances at their workplaces, and whereas April 28th of each year has been chosen by the Canadian Labour Congress as a Day of Mourning for these victims of workplace accidents and disease, a day to remember the maximum sacrifice they have been forced to make in order to earn a living, a day to renew approaches to governments for tougher occupational health and safety standards and more effective compensation, a day to rededicate ourselves to the goal of making Canada's workplaces safer, and whereas April 28th was proclaimed as a Day of Mourning by the Act of Parliament on February 1st, 1991, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor of the City of Weyburn, do hereby proclaim April 28th as Annual Day of Mourning in recognition of the workers killed, injured, or disabled on the job. The other, one other statement by the Weyburn Agriculture Society, he got delayed out in his workplace today, so that'll be brought into some later on in the inquiries. Going forward, motions, accounts payable, and this one has a pecuniary interest, Mr. Chessel there is going to excuse himself. Go ahead.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the purchase is dated on March 19th, 2019, where pecuniary interest has been disclosed, be passed for payment. The purchase includes accounts payable to $13,227.83.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, and this was a purchase made from obviously New Age? And with that, all in favor? The next one, accounts payable, go ahead.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $906,508.29 for March 22nd to April 4th, 2019 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Leisure facility rates, City Manager Warren, or Mr. Crowe? Reading my notes here, so. Andrew, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. The Leisure Services Commission is recommending a rate of a 5% increase over a three-year span with increases coming in year one and three of the proposed rate schedule. The proposed rates will come into effect beginning September 1st at the Weyburn Leisure Centre, Crescent Point Place and Tom Zandi Sports Arena, with the rates implemented at Signal Hill Arts Centre on January 1st, 2020. The current mandate is to operate at a 50% recovery rate throughout our leisure facilities. The increase proposed, the increases proposed along with other earned revenues will assist the Leisure Services Department in reaching that recovery rate. The implementation of services, access of grants, commitment to our user groups, and weather conditions also play a key role in our revenue recovery. The department is dedicated to establishing efficiencies and looking into other revenue sources in order to limit our deficits. The increased rates is recommended to cover costs associated with the facility operations, which are increasing on an annual basis, increases to power rates, minimum wages, and other inflation associated with ongoing facility operational costs. The department is dedicated to offering a high level of service to the community, and in order to do so, we have to look at increasing these rates from time to time. Are there any questions on the proposed rates?
First off, can we have a motion personally, then we'll ask discussion?
I happen to have the motion, your worship. I make a motion that the 2019 to 2022 leisure facility rates recommended for approval by the Leisure Service Commission, at an average, or 5% average increase over the next three years be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. This time, what I wish to know, just so that a lot of people can't see, may not be able to see that at home, so the swimming pool rate for just one person will go up by approximately what, 25 cents?
Yeah, about a quarter. So we're seeing about a 5% rate increase throughout three years, so the bulk of that increase will happen the first year, the second year along the schedule, there will be no increases, and then the third year, there will be another slight increase, averaging out to about 5% across all the facilities.
So by the end, the swimming pool rate will raise by about 25 cents?
Yeah, after year one, the rate's going up about 25 cents.
And then the third year, it'll go up?
The third year, it'll go up on average about another 25 percent, or 25 cents, sorry.
So about 50 cents over three years?
Yeah, over three years.
And what about the sports arena, like the ice?
The ice rate is following a similar schedule. I believe our local community rate, so like minor hockey and the skating club, they'll see about a $5 increase in both the first year and then the third year.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mickle.
Thank you, worship. Andrew, thanks for the work you've done on this file. The question I have, even though it doesn't sound like a lot of increase, but there's people out there that are struggling financially, you think this has a bearing on them or the services? Will it affect them coming into the services? Do you have an opinion on that?
Well, I believe with the schedule that we've set out, we've really taken the economy, what the economy is doing around us, and correlated our increases along with that. We really want to keep our facilities accessible to everybody in the community. Unfortunately, we have to raise our rates every once in a while just to keep up with operational costs. We do offer a variety of free programming or subsidized programming throughout the year. We have $5 family swims, $2 parent and tot swims, free public skating throughout the winter season, and also the odd free swim event at the swimming pool. So we're doing our best to find that balance to not only provide optimal service to the entire community, but also keep it at an affordable price.
Thanks, Andrew. Mr. Van Betchu.
Yes, thank you, Andrew. Yeah, I think I'd like to commend you on the work that your staff has done, because I think this works out, the 5%, that's probably less than what the rate of inflation is over three years. So I think we've kept the increases as low as possible to just cover our expenses that have increased, will increase in this period. So I think the rate is, increase is very moderate and should be well-accepted by the public.
And I guess, as you said, that we don't need to have, keep our rates back, so all of a sudden we have to enormously, you know, jump 50% or 100% increase in one year. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, good work on this also, and I look at, you know, a 5% increase from their part, where really, is it a 10% increase? Because if we're putting in half and the people are putting in half, so is the city budget gonna go up 5% also in that timeframe?
We'll have to kind of see what things around us do and how our revenues come in. Like I said, we're always looking at efficiencies and operations and seeking out grants and just trying to be as optimal as possible to try to keep that budget down.
Okay. The one I'm looking at here and got my attention was the Weyburn Red Wings, big user of our ice surface, of course. At 650, when's the last time they've had an increase, do you know?
I would have to get you that information, I don't have it on hand. I do know, though, across our facilities, the last rates that we saw at the leisure centre were in 2013, and the last rates that we saw at CPP, the skating, the sports arena and Signal Hill were in 2016. So we've seen, we've gone quite a duration of time since we've actually increased our rates.
When I, when I look at the increases for them, if you break it down from today to three years from now, it really is less than three more people coming into the rink to pay admission that covers the extra costs. So that's pretty minor, I think, for the, for that organization to, they should be happy with it, is what I'm...
Yeah, like I said, we've really taken the economy around us into perspective when doing this, and we like to show our rates in a three-year span so that our community groups and our user groups can really plan out their operations so that they can follow a business plan and keep things operating properly.
Actually, it's only two tickets, not three.
Two tickets, there you go.
You know, so that's very, I think it's very acceptable to, to what they have to pay for what they're getting, so thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. The tree and brush chipper tender from our engineering department.
In 2019, fleet service budget contains provision for the procurement of new tree brush chipper. The city have offered a 1994 Vermeer 1250 chipper as a trade. The budget contained $60,000 after trade for this purchase. The tender was prepared and advertised at Sask tender website and the city website. In total, three bids were received. After reviewing the bids, like, and considering the bids that meet specification, performance, utility, warranty, and price, after thorough review, the three bidders are presented in the attached table. The bid from Arprest Supply Corporate was the lowest of those received and meets all tender specification. Though they are located in Calgary, some warranty work for the engine can be performed in Weyburn at Young's Equipment. So we are recommending that this contract to be awarded to Arprest Supply in the amount of $53,000, and a further recommendation for purchasing 36-month extended warranty at a cost of $3,310.
With that, your worship, I'd like to move that the tender from Arbor Supply Company for the supply of a new tree and brush chipper in amount of $53,000 with a 36-month extended warranty option at the added cost of $3,310 for a total cost of $56,310 be accepted as presented.
Second? I'll second that, your worship. Question? Mr. Richards.
Thanks, your worship. Now, if I may, can I just be clear, that, that price does include us returning the 1994 Vermeer as a trade? Did we buy that brand-new? So has that machine been in service for 25 years?
Yes.
So do you expect this one to be in service for 25 years? Thank you.
We're not chipping in the winter, yes.
I guess we don't chip in the winter.
So that's what's up. Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Very good, Natter. Next, back to Natter again, irrigation system design.
In 2019, the city budgeted $55,000 to landscape grade and install irrigation and seed areas at the Asiniboia Park subdivision for two parks. The project called for the city to perform site preparation and finish landscaping with irrigation systems, design, and installation to be performed by contractors. Request for proposal for irrigation system design and installation was prepared and advertised at Sask tenders and the city webpage. A total of five submissions were received, presented in the attached table. Driftwood Irrigation and Landscaping out of Weyburn has performed irrigation installation work for the city in the past years with satisfactory results. It should be noted that the value, that while the value of this work is well under the budgeted amount of $55,000, the surplus fund will be utilized for additional work necessary to introduce water service to the Johnson Drive site, as well as the costs associated with survey work and finishing the landscaping. So it is recommended that the work to be awarded to Driftwood Irrigation and Landscaping of Weyburn at an amount of $25,917.
Go ahead.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the bid of Driftwood Irrigation and Landscape of Weyburn for the irrigation system design and installation for two municipal reserves in the Asiniboia Park subdivision in the amount of $25,917 be accepted as presented.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Natter, there's a big difference in these bids, and I just, are you really confident that the bidders understand the scope of that work? It's not just a few, it's as much as double or four times some of those bids, and I want to, I want, I want some comfort from you, that you're comfortable that these contractors understand the scope of work they're bidding on.
Like the procedure for any, like, you know, before evaluating any response for a request for proposal that we contacted, like, you know, the awarded bidder beforehand, before, like, you know, presenting this to the council, we do the reference check for the rest of all, as well as if we find a suspicious price, we usually, like, you know, go forward and back and, like, you know, try to justify the pricing, and this, there was, there will be another case, which is Mergon Street, it's coming today. So we do a kind of, like, you know, check about, like, you know, what is the criteria did you vote, what, what did you build as a contingency on, on your pricing? So after doing this reference check, we are, like, you know, comfortable presenting this at this cost, like, you know, from Driftwood. Some of the pricing comes, like, you know, as an anomaly, like, you know, coming, because they don't need it simply, like, you know, they just start shooting high, so if it comes, it comes, if it doesn't come, it doesn't come.
Thank you. If I could ask one more question, your worship. Secondly, can you help me understand a little bit what that excess money then will be used for? I know you said it will go back into projects, but can you be more specific?
Tying into, like, you know, tying the water service to the, like, you know, to the irrigation service which will be installed, will be metering this water, so we know the consumption for those ones, and landscaping, because, like, you know, those, those two spots are in a rough shape right now, so it will be used for landscaping, recontouring it, purchasing, like, you know, trees.
So will you go back to tender to spend the rest of that money?
We will do most of the work internally.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I see. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Water and wastewater infrastructure work, the follow-up there. Natter, again?
On March 25th, the city council award part three of the request for proposal water and wastewater infrastructure work. Part three called for sewer service connection renewal at five locations utilizing trenchless technology. Based on the request for proposal submission, the work was awarded to Culiberra Sewer and Water Works out of Saskatoon in the amount of $30,093.40. The only other firm bidding on part three was Advanced Sewer Restoration out of Weyburn. Their bid was significantly higher at a cost of $43,371.50. The 2019 utility operating budget contained $35,000 for this project. Immediately after following the award by the city council, all bidder, post-successful and unsuccessful bidders, were notified via email. Shortly, we received that Culiberra indicating that they would be unable to accept the award. Contacting them in order to see, like, you know, to understand what was the concern. Culiberra cited the fact that their proposal was improperly submitted as it infringed on a territorial right of another company licensed for new flow. This company is, like, you know, the Advanced Sewer Restoration out of Weyburn. Prior to the preparation of this report, I met with Advanced Sewer Restoration in order to negotiate the pricing with them and to try to, for them to match the price for Culiberra Sewer and Water Works. They stated in their opinion Culiberra must have underestimated the scope of work at their bid, and they are, they feel that the pricing they provided is a fair pricing. So there is three options that we are presenting here, either canceling part three of the water and wastewater infrastructure project for 2019, secondly, prepare and advertise an entirely new request for proposal just for part three, or reducing the scope of work for part three from five sewer connection to four sewer connection in order to meet the budget constraints. As an engineering department, we are recommending to proceed with option number three.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll move that council reduce the scope of the work in wastewater infrastructure work, part three, from five to four locations for sewer service connection renewal in order to meet budget constraints of $35,000 and award the work to advance sewer restoration.
I'll second that, your worship. Question? Go ahead, Mr. Richards.
Thanks, your worship. Thanks, Natter, for your patience, as I try to wrap my head around all of this. So going from five connections to four connections, does that pose a risk in any way that we're now not doing a connection that we previously identified need to be changed?
It's not posing any risk, like, you know, this is an ongoing project that we started in 2018 for replacing a certain amount of the deteriorating infrastructure, so replacing five hydrants, five valves, five sewer connections. So we started this in 2018, this is the second year of the program, so it will just, like, you know, delay us by one connection. Thank you.
Natter, how many, roughly, in this, how many connections do you think we have to go after this? How many more do you think? I know that's kind of a bad question, but is it, just idea, is it 20, 40, 80? Or are you...
Much more.
Much more, oh, okay. So, okay, so it's much more, so then I guess that calls into the question that we'll have to discuss this a budget time to see to whether we should be ramping this up or not to make sure that we are getting this if we've got much more on that. Okay, Ms. Mickle.
Just to clarify, Natter, much more, he asked you three, three questions, was it much more than 80, much more than 40, or much more than 20?
Much more than 80.
That's what I thought. So, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Two more for you, Natter. Second, last one, 2019. Second last one, 2019 line painting, roadways and airport council. Airport. Line painting. Go ahead.
By me? No? Yeah. Okay.
Public Works and Parks Department budgeted for traffic and zone marking, has allocated $115,000 for contractor for line painting, and $10,000 for airport line painting, funded partially by capital assistance program application, cap funding. The city on March the 5th, 2019, have requested or advertised a request for proposal for line painting citywide and at the airport. Part one, which is traffic marking, center lines, crosswalks, and intersection. Part two, curb marking, no marking zones. Part three, airport taxiway and main runway marking. Quotations were received by the city of Weyburn by March 27th, 2019. A total of four proposals was received, and the result as presented in the table. We are recommending that part one and two and three be awarded to Line Painting, Line West Limited of Cotocos, Alberta, at the presented amount.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to make a motion that part one, traffic markings, part two, curb marking, and part three, airport taxiway and main runway park markings of the 2019 line painting roadways and airport be awarded to Line West Limited as follows. Part one, $97,651.14. Part two, $1.12 per lineal meter. Part three, $10,642.68.
Your Worship, I'd like to second that motion. Discussion?
Thank you, Your Worship. Nader, if I got a poor memory, but is there more money going into this than last year? If I remember, our line painting was about $75,000 last year. Am I in that ballpark? Or has it just gone up that much?
No, this is...
Our contract last year was...
Almost the same value that it was last year, like, you know, there's no substantial increase in the value.
Okay.
Yeah.
I may sound like a broken record here, but I know there's other technology out there that is not the water-based paint that we use, and I think I've discussed that with you. Is there any indication in here to try an intersection to see if that other system, that other product is worthwhile looking into?
At the budget, which was, like, you know, approved, like, you know, for the $115,000, like, you know, it is hard to integrate this plastic-based material. Like, you know, an intersection will cost roughly, like, you know, twenty-five grand using this one. It's more durable, it will last longer, definitely. However, like, you know, due to the fact that the budget stays at the same dollar figure as last year, we didn't change it much, so we'll go with the same technique off now.
I still have a problem with that, because we painted, and three weeks later, on the busy intersections, it's gone, or a month later. And that's what I struggle, that we're putting money, $100,000 every year into something that doesn't last. It just doesn't, and I don't know... I'd sure like to see us find some money to do an intersection, to see if this other product is worthwhile. We're one of the only cities in Saskatchewan that doesn't use at least some of that other product.
Most of the plastic application is used, like, you know, in highway applications, because, like, you know, it's like the amount of traffic is high. Government road is a high-traffic area, which we can integrate this at a later stage, like, or try this intersection. However, it needs some prep work, it needs, like, you know, a rough surface for the plastic material to stick into, like, you know, the asphalt, so there is some kind of associated extra work to be done before applying this. That being said, about, like, you know, applying this material, this is widely, like, used in, which is water-based material. Province-wide, this is a regulation of the Ministry of Environment. However, like, you know, there will be some specification. Usually, the contractor used to stop at the city of Weyburn in the midnight and do the painting and leave. Now, we are stipulating in our contract, new contract, that he has to do this in a certain temperature with certain criteria, so this time, I think, like, you know, the bench should last longer on the ground.
I hope so, but I know what I've been told about it, is that a lot of cities are using this, especially in school zones, crosswalks near schools, and they're finding it very successful. Now, that's the guy that's selling it, of course, is telling me that, but...
It is successful.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Van Beter?
Yeah, I think you asked the same question I was going to ask Council Bailey, but seeing it's $25,000 an intersection, then I'm going to guess that it's ten times the cost of the other line painting that we're using, if it's cost that much. So I can see where the cost is almost unaffordable.
Mr. Chasell?
Just a quick question. As part of our contract, is there requirements to clean the intersections and clean? And also, is there... I have noticed over the years, they'll paint right beside the other line, which I guess is kind of disturbing to me, why they can't just follow the same line. But I have just noticed, too, where different companies just rolled in, do a line, the street wasn't even cleaned at all, and I've noticed in front of my own building, it's gone right away.
Usually, we do street sweeping before, like, you know, applying the line painting. However, as I mentioned, like, you know, the contractor that we used to work with, which is, like, you know, who's the same contractor that we are awarding the work to, used to come and, like, you know, do the painting without notifying the city, like, you know, in the midnight, usually, because, like, you know, he doesn't... He wasn't willing to use traffic accommodation and leaving the second day. So putting the criteria, the procedure, I think, like, you know, a better quality work should be the result.
Mr. Mickle?
Thank you, Your Worship.
Nader, obviously, that number represents, they're going to do it probably twice in Weyburn this year. When's the first time, and when's the second time?
We didn't discuss the dates yet, but, like, you know, in the request for proposal, like, the first timeframe is in May, somewhere in May. The second time, it will be, like, you know, second, third and fourth week of August.
Reason why I ask that question, government road, we anticipate doing sometime in June. So that road, if becomes in May, will not be done, right?
Yes.
It's going to happen. So there's other paving going to be done in different areas, too. Sims Avenue, but I don't think there's much line... But there is line painting there as well, too. So would you be better off not to hold until at least government road is done, for the first application, until school's out, whatever, and then come again in prior to school starting? Or does that make sense?
You are talking about, like, you know, pushing, like, you know, the starting, like, you know, the first time to somewhere after...
Yeah, hold off until we get at least government road done, because that's going to be done and won't be done again until August or September, if they come on time. If it's the same company revealing as it was a year ago...
They will come in time.
Time? Okay, because last time, they didn't.
Last time, like, you know, there was a three-year contract between the city and this company, just for, like, you know, filling in a history side. So in 2016, 2017, they showed once, like, you know, though their contract was to show twice, to do the application twice in the year. In 2018, when we enforced it, like, you know, the contract with them, and we sent them requests beforehand to give us timeframe for showing at the city, last year, they showed twice, like, you know, in the timeframe, they presented to the city. However, still, there is extra specifications that they need to abide with. But for pushing all the work after, like, you know, paving for government road, like, you know, we'll end up, like, you know, having one-time application. So I'd rather give the work, like, you know, finish the work as much as we can. We can take off this part of the scope of work for painting government road and doing it, like, you know, whenever they show the second time.
Thanks, Nader. This, Nader, this, you said that this is the same company that's had this for the last few years, and I know that this is a... The next one is almost twice the money for doing that. This is their... But I would take it that this, with these new stipulations in here, and this is only a one-year contract, correct?
This is a one-year contract, could be extended for three years. There is provisions in the contract. If the performance for the contractor is not satisfactory from the city point of view, we can cancel the contract right now. There was no provision like this before in the previous contract.
Okay, because again, there is, I think, like you said, that they didn't show up the one time, and there's a lot of issues with them before, and so this time, this is their kind of one last chance at putting in the proposal, and then we're just going to have to look at somebody more expensive, but they're not going to do this properly here. Agreed? So, okay. So with that being said, with these more proposals and being able to push them to make sure that they perform properly, call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Mergan Street Water Main Replacement.
The city budgeted $400,000 for Mergan Street Water Main Replacement under the National and Regional Project Fund. The city will coordinate the main installation along Mergan Street between Cotto Avenue West and Prairie Avenue. The contractor have to provide temporary water service for nine residential properties, replace approximately 178 meters of 150 millimeters of water main. This is the last cast iron section in the city, identified in the city, just to note. Reconnect all water service lines for the nine residentials and the Crescent Point Place Arena. On February 1st, 2019, Mergan Street Water Main Replacement Request for Proposal was posted on Sasktenders and on the city website. Quotation was received from seven companies, as presented in the table, in the attached table. Our recommendation, after doing further investigation and reference check, we recommend that the 2019 Mergan Street Water Main Replacement contract be awarded to JJ Trucking Limited out of Arcola, Saskatchewan.
Your Worship, I'll move that bid from JJ Trucking Limited to provide Mergan Street
Water Main Replacement in the amount of $75,676, excluding GST and PST be accepted.
I'll second that, Your Worship. Discussion? Mr. Mickle?
Thank you, Your Worship.
Nader, there's $400,000 in the budget for that area. Did we previously award the contract in paving already, at a recent meeting?
Yes, we did.
And what was that number, Nader? Do you remember what it was?
It's not on top of my head right now, but it's in the premises, $150,000.
So we're very close. Okay, so roughly, 230?
Yes.
We almost have enough to do that sidewalk in front of River.
No. No. This is a funded project under the National and Regional Project Fund, and the criteria for the fund is, it has to be related to water-related projects.
I keep trying.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is the last piece of cast iron water main, right?
Yes.
And cast iron was, that was, like, what, 1920, probably? Or even older?
Yeah.
So, and then we're finally done with all that, so, good. Call the question. All in favor? Carry unanimously. Just about as old as you, Dick. Yep, so, introduction of bylaws, there's unfinished business, there's none. New business, naming of civic property. City manager?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. So everyone has been provided with a report on naming of civic property and development policy. So what we're looking at is to provide a policy which will help us screen applications received, and make sure we have consistent guidelines for naming of municipal-owned and controlled facilities, street, neighborhoods, and parks. So for this policy, we want to create some different things. So one thing we want to do is make sure we have a names master list. So names master list would list municipally-owned and controlled facilities, excluding libraries, and it will include streets, neighborhoods, and parks. And we'll also create a naming committee, and anything that goes through this board will have to be approved by city council. So going through the naming committee, so the naming committee will consist of His Worships, so the mayor, two members of council, which will be appointed by the city council, and three members from administration. For the terms, the terms will be, for the two city councils shall be a one-year term, the mayor will be in, as long as the mayor's in as mayor, and then the administration will be set by the city manager as we move forward for that. So for the policy, the naming advisory committee shall screen all applications for the things I mentioned before. They also should provide recommendations to council for approval for additions to the naming list. So for the naming process, there'll be a screening process for new name submissions, and they'll have to follow the following criteria. Following criteria will be, have to be, first of all, based on categories, so the mayor will be the first criteria for a new naming. Second will be elected officials who have served for twelve or more years. Next one will be outstanding contributions by individuals from the public at large, or former city employees, in any of the following ways. So it must be a person who's demonstrated excellent courage, exceptional dedication to a service in ways that bring special credit to the city of Weyburn, the province of Saskatchewan, and to Canada. A person who has volunteered significant amounts of time, effort, and resources to support community services or humanitarian causes, or a person who has achieved a deed or activity performed in an outstanding professional manner, or of an uncommonly high standard that brings considerable benefit to the city of Weyburn, province of Saskatchewan, and Canada. Fourth criteria on here will be historical names, celebrating a historical event or figure. Next one will be the names of a person, or name of other than a person, that may be added to the names master list when a unique or extenuating circumstances warrant, and names which recognize flora or fauna of a local area, or geographical or topographical feature of the local area. Also, another criteria we'll be looking at is that the naming of the municipal-owned controlled facility, streets, neighborhoods, and parks shall be done in consideration, but not limited to the following. So we want to make sure it's ease identification and avoidance of confusion for the public. We want to make sure there's consistently themed of an area. We want to make sure the purpose of facility and logistical connection to the name. The Suffolk Street will be reserved for streets that are aligned north to south, and the Suffolk Avenue will be reserved for streets that are aligned east to west. Surnames alone will be used for the street names of streets and all neighborhoods. A surname alone will be used for the naming of municipal-owned properties, except in the case of former elected officials of the city of Weyburn where the given names or surnames may be used. An external party may be a title sponsor, namesake of a future or existing facility in recognition of exemptional funding, goods, or services provided to the facility. And when a name has been applied, it will be removed from the names master list and placed in the city's naming records, except in the cases of former elected officials of the city of Weyburn where the name will be retained in appendix to the names master list. Also on here is talking about duplication of names, so we're making sure there's no duplication of names for any of the areas. So the main duty of the committee will be, one, to look at naming of the master list, so going through all the applications that will be submitted to the city planning department, requests for naming specifically municipal-controlled properties, requests for renaming specific civic-controlled property, and selection names for the names master list. So the process for this will be that the names will be submitted to our planning committee, or planning department, sorry. The review of the documentations and recommendations will come from the committee, and then approval will be from city council. So this committee will not have approval authority, everything will have to come back to the council level. Also, within the policy, we talk about responsibilities. So like I said, responsibilities of city council is to make sure they do provide all approvals. The city's clerk office will keep all the records. Naming advisory committee will collect all information, analyze the information, provide recommendations, and then the city planning department will receive all information, provide a feedback and research into the areas, and provide information for the committee to review as they move forward. and provide information for the committee to review as they move forward. Any questions?
Before he does, your worship, I'm gonna make a motion. Thanks very much, Matthew, for that agenda item that was lengthy, but you explained it very well. The motion I make is that the naming of civic property and development policy recommended by the city manager be accepted as presented. Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Kerry Namus. There's a few things on queries and inquiries and announcements. First thing, next council meeting due to... I'm getting to that one there, so, thank you. But we're just talking, the next council meeting will be on Tuesday, April 23rd because of Easter. And so that will be, we're not doing the Monday, the 22nd. The, before we, we've got a delegation from the Waverne Ag Society. And just before we do that, I want to make mention that on, yesterday, the April 7th was Green Shirt Day. If you would look to our youth mayor, London Field. Earlier that day, I signed, earlier the week, I had, last week I signed a proclamation of Green Shirt Day of Waverne's participation in it. And Mr. Field will, shall read the proclamation that I signed.
Whereas on April 6th, 2018, a bus crash involving members of the SHL Humboldt Broncos led to the loss of several lives. And whereas this loss included Logan Boulay, who succumbed to his injuries on April 7th. And whereas Logan's wishes to be an organ donor were fulfilled by his family, saving the lives of six other Canadians and inspiring over 100,000 individuals to register as an organ donor in what has since become known as the Logan Boulay Effect. Whereas on April 16th, 2018, Waverne High School student Kalen Bersick-Panchuk was involved in a train-vehicle collision and tragically succumbed to her injuries on August 22nd, 2018. Whereas Kalen's wishes to become an organ donor were fulfilled by her family, saving the lives of three people. Kalen had chosen to become an organ donor as part of the Logan Boulay Effect. And whereas the Boulay family, Canadian Blood Services and the Canadian Transplant Association have partnered to memorialize this act of life-saving generosity with a day dedicated to organ donor awareness and registration. Therefore, Marcel Roy, mayor of the city of Waverne, do proclaim April 7th, 2019 as Green Shirt Day to inspire organ donor awareness in the city of Waverne, urging citizens to be inspired and become an organ donor.
Very well read. Thank you. Now, Mr. Shira, could please, from representing the Waverne Agricultural Society, if you would speak a few words to us.
Good evening. So yeah, I don't, I was told I was supposed to come, so. When he requested that I come and speak to you in regards.
Well, I think what, what we wanted to hear from you, Clay, was just, we know how busy the Waverne Agricultural Society is this summer. And so if you could just review for everybody our activities. I know the fair days have changed a little bit, the rodeo, all of those things, the cattle shows that are scheduled for this year and next year. If you can just review that for us.
Sure, I can do that.
Tell them how many people we need to volunteer also for these events.
Yeah, well, I don't know if I could actually put a number to it, but yeah, we need, we need a lot. And it's all, I mean, many hands make light work, right? So, so to start off, I guess, in the second weekend in May, May, I believe it's the 10th and 11th or 11th, 12th, we have the Waverne High, or the High School Rodeo will be in town. Saskatchewan High School Rodeo Association. And that same weekend, there's a, there's a calf cruise. It's a, it's a cattle show going on at the barns. And on the Sunday, that same weekend is the fur and feathers sale. So it's a very busy weekend.
Is it the which sale?
Pardon me?
Which type of sale?
Fur and feather sale. So they sell like rare and exotic animals, birds, chickens, like all, rabbits, ducks, you name it. It's, it's quite the deal. Yeah. If you're into that sort of thing.
Thank you.
We also have in May, the farrier competition is coming back. We, we had to postpone it last year just due to scheduling constraints with, with the actual farriers going to Calgary. And we couldn't host it on the dates that we had planned. So it's been rescheduled for, I believe it's May long weekend, but I haven't, I wasn't able to confirm that with Marla. Then in June, we really don't have a lot going on until the end of June when our 4H show starts. The 4H achievement days start the last couple of days of June and then roll into our 4H regional show, cattle show. And we do have the Light Horse Show going on on that Sunday, I believe it's June 30th. And then the, throughout the 4H show, we also have entertainment. We've got a movie night planned. We're not sure whether it'll be Saturday or Sunday, but there will be a movie night hosted by Waverne Agricultural Society and open to all. And then Monday and Tuesday, we're gonna have the chuck wagons back again this year. And then we're gonna shut down, I believe, once the 4H show ends on, on Wednesday. We're going to actually have kind of that Wednesday off to kind of recoup and get reorganized. And I believe the fair will start Thursday with, we're having Bullfighters and Mini, Mini Bronx. It's kind of a, an attraction that, that's becoming quite popular in Canada, especially in the western provinces, obviously. And so that's gonna be Thursday. Friday, we have our CCA rodeo, the slack in the morning and then a rodeo performance in the afternoon, evening. And I believe we're gonna be having a band in our beer gardens. We're gonna try and do it outside again, like we did last year. It went over quite well. Saturday is our big day. We have a kids rodeo in the morning, a CCA rodeo in the afternoon at 1 o'clock. And then our, our big demo derby is gonna be in the evening to kind of close out our fair. We're not gonna actually have the fair going on Sunday this year. We're gonna have kind of our grand finale with a great big day on Saturday. And then we have a band from Lloyd Minster booked, the Dirt Rich Band. They've got a couple of albums out and they're gonna be playing the beer gardens or weather permitting the beer gardens or else the curling rink on Saturday evening. And that'll wrap up that, the fair portion. And then we have, at the end of July, we have a Charley, a junior Charley show coming to town. And it's, it's quite a big, big event. There'll be a lot of cattle coming, potentially more than we have at our 4H regional show. And the following weekend, immediately following weekend, is a Junior Hereford Show coming. So we do have quite a lot going on throughout the summer. It's gonna take quite a lot of time invested by, by the Ag Society Board and, and its volunteers. There was a few other things that I was asked to mention. The, we are sponsoring the free swim dates again this year. It's something we've done, I believe, the last three or four years, where, where once a week we sponsor free swimming at the pool. And we've also been donating to Curling Rink with the, the help of the 50/50 from Flavors of Fall. And, and what was, there was one other. But we've been donating that to the Humane Society for their garage sales. So, I don't know, the Ag Society is really trying to, we're trying to help out as much as we can in the community. We, we really look forward to working with other groups and we really are trying to create a, create an environment where people want to come and work with us and, and build, build on our events, build on, on our facilities out there and continue to grow and, and help Waverne grow.
And Flavors of Fall will be going again this?
I believe so. Yeah. Yeah, it's been very successful and have, we've had a ton of positive feedback from. So yeah, it will be going. I believe the dates might be different than, I believe it's always fallen on Thanksgiving weekend, but I think they're actually gonna try and change the dates. But it is going this fall.
Very good. Any other questions? Mr. Mickel? I want to commend you and your organization, sir. That's fantastic what you do. I was on the Ag Board many years ago in different phases, but, and they were aggressive. You people haven't, haven't backed up or anything. And I, it's fantastic what you people bring. It's good for you to be here tonight to tell the citizens of Waverne what you actually do. They see things, they don't know what's happening. But again, thank you so much for what you bring to the city.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We've, like, I can't even tell you how, how many times I've been, had my eyes open since I got on the board. I was, you know, I was always involved as much as possible with helping put on the rodeo or events that did go on there. But I, once you get on the board, it's amazing. It's amazing the, how your eyes get open to the logistics, the costs that are incurred. We, we've been trying to, trying to just improve the face of the agricultural society and just continue to help it grow and help our events get better. I mean, our fair, our fair, we're trying to, there's no reason why it can't be one of the best fairs in Saskatchewan. We've got a great community. We've got great community support. Our businesses are fantastic to deal with. Their sponsorship's always been wonderful. And we just really want to see the community support continue to grow. I believe it has been growing and I think, I think last year Mother Nature kind of gave us a kick in the shin with the heat warnings for three days straight. But given good weather, I can't see why our fair can't be a world beater. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. One last comment, Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship. To the Director of Engineering, two things. First, I want to commend you and Superintendent Moore on the depth of the reports you provide to council. Very good. And I appreciate the decision items, the way you lay them out. Something that was in one of your reports that didn't get discussed tonight, though, was the level at Nickel Lake. I'm wondering if you could just get everybody up to speed with where the water levels are at Nickel Lake and how that compares to last year and kind of what the prognosis might be this year.
So we are at the full level of Nickel Lake of now. It spills, but not much. So we decided that we are not going to boil the logs for now, just to keep the water level steady of now. Once we get a rain event, like you know, we'll try to take the logs and start spilling some extra water in order to renew the quality of the water. So it is now at a full level. Last year, if I'm not mistaken, it was 50 centimeter less than the full level at that same time of the year.
Thank you.
Mr. Man Ditchu?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to just mention that one of our city councillors in the room here received a very prestigious award a couple of weeks ago on March 26th. Councillor Bailey was awarded the Golden Spike Award. And they went through his list of accomplishments and volunteer that he did. I think the president of the Waverne Red Wings, he was part of the, very big part of the family place and they're doing their auctioning. And just a big supporter throughout the years. He's been on council now for eight years. And I say I'd like to congratulate him. And it's because of people like Councillor Bailey that we need volunteers in the community. They are what make the community. As the man from, gentleman from Ag Society said, it's, we need volunteers. And I just ask people to take time out of their busy lives to volunteer, get involved in the community as Councillor Bailey did. And maybe someday you'll get that award also. And so congratulations, Councillor Bailey.
Thank you. Yeah, that was very humbling and appreciative. I've always believed in this community and will still do my best to, to do what I can do when I can do it. Thank you very much.
One more good news for the community that of today, we started commissioning the new reservoir. This commissioning stage will stay, will last for one week. Then once everything is rectified, like you know, the new distribution system will be completely on service. So this is one good, other good news for the community.
That's been, that's been a long time coming up there. When do we start working on the other water reservoir?
First Avenue Reservoir, like you know, the design is complete. We are in the review stages for the request for proposal to be tendered. It is anticipated to be tendered by the end of April. Construction activities, we are expecting to start July 2019 and to be completed before the end of this year. So it will, it is on the way.
And with these two reservoirs, to ensure the citizens of Waverne, with these two new water reservoirs, we've got ample water, clean, fresh water for about three days for the size of, what, about 20,000 population? Somewhere in there with this new reservoir?
With the old and the new, like you know, the old capacity that we have for the city was 7 million litres on hand. Now we increased the total capacity for the city for 20 million litres on hand. So we are almost tripling, like you know, the holding capacity for the city.
Very good. Thank you. And thank you for leading us through that project on there. With that, any other comments? Seeing none, there's no notice of motion. So I thought at this point in time, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.